January seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina. Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here. I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I need a motion to approve the City Council's minutes of December twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. Alderman Sizmarski and Alderman Woods, second. Questions, corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Written communique, I have a letter from the Chamber of Commerce. Dear Mayor Police and the council, as you may or may not be aware, the Chamber of Commerce has followed your lead and developed a strategic plan to guide us in the future. As we reexamine our mission and priorities in two thousand and nineteen, we have made a few changes for two thousand and nineteen. The board has voted to fund one scholarship for seven hundred dollars for a student from Fenton. This is not a final, permanent change. We will keep you informed. Before I proceed with the letters I sent out to the schools in January, I'll need to know how the city will proceed in the joint effort. In the past, the city has matched the chamber with an equal amount of scholarships. Last year, the city and chamber together gave out seven scholarships. If the city sees fit to provide the other six this year, that would be great. If the city would like to continue to match us for a total of two scholarships, that's fine, but I'll need to know. You should also know that at this level, there would be no scholarships offered at Lake Park High School or Addison Trail. Last year, we had no applicant from Lake Park, and I was told there were only ten graduating Wooddale students. That scholarship might not be missed. Please let me know what is decided, so I can get the initial notifications out soon. Thank you. So if you guys now let Mr. Mermis, Mr. Mermis will put this on the agenda, so you guys can discuss it next week, committee. Or at the next council meeting. I don't know how fast she wanted it, because she probably got some letters out. Next, mayor's report. Just a reminder, next week, not next week, Saturday, January twenty-sixth, coffee with the council right here in the chambers from nine to eleven a.m. for all residents. Next, item number one, resolution granting the advice and consent of the City Council to the mayor's appointment of Michael Curio to the Streetscape and Economic Enhancement Committee. We need a motion for the resolution. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. And thank you to Ms. Seibert for being on the committee for many, many years. Thank you. Next, item number two. Let minutes reflect. At seven thirty-four, Alderman Messina is here. Next, Fenton Music Boosters donation request.
Mayor, make a motion to five hundred dollars to the Fenton Boosters.
Tony, second. Five hundred. Any questions? Roco.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Upstein.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley. Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes. Item number three. This is Cruise Night Series. It's not Prairie Fest Cruise Night Series. This is separate, let's see, the dates will be June seventeenth, July fifteenth, and August twenty-third. This is a new item. This is seven hundred and fifty dollars per event. So any new items are always for, events are always brought to the council. Any, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion.
Question.
Messina.
Question.
Yes, yes, one second. So.
I second.
Alderman, Roy Wesley, your question?
Where's this going to be hosted at?
Go ahead, Mr. Mermis.
It's in the new downtown park area, the new grassy area on the new commercial street.
And the grass?
Adjacent to White Cottage over there, in the street.
In the street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
So, we having three of them right downtown, so what do we have to do for it? So, we paying the seven hundred and fifty dollars, so what is our, could someone just explain what seven hundred and fifty, how's that going to work?
Go ahead, Mr. Mermis.
Yeah, it's, our commitment is to provide, you know, the power like we usually do porta-potties, things like that, so we've got a kind of a low commitment level. They handle all the rest of the stuff for their cars, so we just provide the basic amenities, and they coordinate the cars and everything else.
Go ahead.
So they're going, they're going to take part in the advertising for this and all that, or is that our responsibility to advertise?
Mr. Mermis.
Well, if you want to get deep into the advertising, Grant's here, he can kind of explain the marketing of it and whatnot, but I'd feel more comfortable with him answering those questions.
That's fine, I don't care.
We can step out. Grant, can you please, thank you.
As far as the marketing goes, we would promote it through our usual channels, our social media, our website, our newsletter, electronic newsletter, things like that. But the company that we're partnering with would also do a lot of marketing to their specific groups that target this sort of audience.
Follow up, Alderman Wesley? Any other, Alderman Messina?
Hey, Grant, from what I understood, they actually will have their own participants, their own group members attend the cruise night as well?
Mr., go ahead.
That is correct.
Follow up.
So that'll drive up attendance as well. Aside from what our efforts net, they will also be driving attendance?
Go ahead, Grant.
Yes, that's correct.
Thanks.
Alderman Wesley, yeah, go ahead, another question?
So, is there entry fee for a vehicle to get into it? Say a Wooddale resident's got an old car or something, who wants to get into it, and here's about our media and ads. Is there entry fee to get into this car show?
Go ahead, Grant.
I'm actually going to introduce Steve Haworka from the company that we'd be partnering with. He is here tonight, and I think that he can answer that for us.
Alderman Wesley wants to enter his vehicle, I can tell.
Go ahead. For the Cruise Night Series, there is no entry fee. It's a way to help market.
Excuse me.
Can I have your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Steve Haworka with BGV Motorsports.
Could you spell that?
B as in boy, G as in girl, V as in Victor, Motorsports. Last name is spelled H.
Your last name is.
Oh.
It was your last name, that was the one. Thank you.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry about that. So, for the Cruise Night, and actually the cruise-in that we're doing with the Prairie Fest, because they're both kind of tied together, as well answer questions now for both, there is no entry fee. Basically, this is a way to market the Wooddale community and the Wooddale businesses to a market that's not known or known to you guys yet. We are going to be marketing this series everywhere from southern Wisconsin all the way up to Woodstock, down to La Grange, to Indiana, because that's how far of a reach we have. So, if a Wooddale resident has a car that they would like to come out and bring it out and show it, they're more than welcome. We do not, my company does not, never has and never will, limit who can come out, because I'm not going to be that person that's going to judge whether somebody thinks that their car is a nice car that they want to show or not.
Any other questions? Alderman Sorrentino, go ahead.
So, these three evenings are going to be standalone events? They're not in conjunction with anything else that's going on?
Nope, we, these are standalone events. When my partner, who's not here tonight, and I and Grant, we talked about this, we tried to pick a night that would be the most beneficial to Wooddale. Because as anybody who files anything with, with car shows, everybody has them popping up all over the place, and the third Monday night of the month turned out to be the best night that we could get a good, single standalone series to bring attention to Wooddale.
Follow up, Alderman Sorrentino, go ahead.
Do you bring in any vendors other than the car owners?
Go ahead.
We have, we, we're, Grant and I, we've been talking about this, we're going to focus on basically just a couple food vendors to come on out. Obviously, because the area that we're talking about is at Wooddale Road and Commercial, White Ho, you know, White Cottage Pizza's right there, so we're going to invite them to come out and have a vendor booth. The other company that we've talked to has been Sweet Baby Ray's. I talked to them today, they're going to get back to me the beginning of next week. And the Grant, when we talked to him on Tuesday, he knows a ice cream vendor that might want to come out too, so.
Alderman Jacob.
What kind of attendance does this, does this you'd normally bring at all the shows that you have to?
Go ahead.
We've run cruise nights up to five hundred and sixty cars. Obviously, we can't get five hundred and sixty cars on that street there. Our goal is to try and pull in about seventy-five to a hundred cars the first year, and see how it grows.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Upstein.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next. All right, next, we have the Prairie Fest Car Show. Staff has requested feedback, of course. Special Events Committee voted to approve an agreement with BGV Motorsports an amount of twelve fifty to provide a judged classic car show Friday, July twenty-sixth, from five to nine p.m. to be held at the Junior High Parking Lot. This is during Prairie Fest.
Do I make that motion?
Second.
Any questions on this one? Alderman Wesley, yes.
I, I have, is there entry fee in this one?
No. There's, you need to go to the microphone, I'm sorry.
I already got that answered, but I have another follow-up.
Okay. No entry fee?
No entry fee.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Follow up. So have we approached the school district of using our parking lot?
Grant, if you could.
Yes, we have. The superintendent is in favor of it. I spoke with the business manager as well, who's also in favor, they're going to take it to the board with our regular IGA request.
Okay.
Follow up, go ahead.
I have one more.
Yeah, no problem.
So, I've been to several car shows, Addison's, Benson has them and all that. I noticed that the car show people always got beer in their car, they open it up, and they have a beer sit in their lounge chairs and, or chairs. How is that going to work here? Because according to, according to what I understand, there could be no alcohol on school property.
Go ahead.
So how are we going to control that?
We do not promote, and we do not recommend, and we do not let anybody that we know of drink alcohol at our cruise nights or at our car shows, okay? You're right, there are some times where people sneak them in. We had a show in October, Halloween show, ten o'clock in the morning, the guy was drinking a beer. I told him, you can't drink, one, it's ten o'clock in the morning, but you can't be drinking a beer out here in a parking lot on the street. You got to get rid of it, and he got rid of it. Short of having a police officer there standing by every other car to make sure that somebody doesn't do something like that, the best that my staff can do is, if they see it, tell somebody, no, you can't do it. We can make sure that we put in our advertising, no alcohol allowed, and that's, and that's perfectly okay with us.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't.
And at the Fest, the officers are already standing right there at the entrance, so, go ahead, follow up.
No, I understand it, but I just don't want the school to get in trouble if they see alcohol on the grounds of, right, but believe me, I think it was a state law that they can't have alcohol on the school property. Or, could you help me out, Alderman?
Yeah. Mr. Bond, do you know?
Well, there's, obviously, we've got a city code, liquor license, that does it. There are some exceptions to that. Generally, the alcohol is not served at a, on school property. But for special events, they give special events, like there's not an absolute prohibition on that for schools. That is required, that, and it's not being requested, nor, like we said, considered, but it becomes an enforcement as was indicated, and if there's somebody who's doing it, if they, they were policing themselves, if it becomes a part where someone doesn't want to voluntarily comply, the gentleman with uniform and gun, the next thing is a whole step, people who can encourage them to comply or suffer the legal consequences.
Okay, I'm good then, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, roll call on this one.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Upstein.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes. And that passes. Next. Sounds of Summer Concert Series. So again, Special Events Committee voted to approve the addition of two summer concerts for two thousand and nineteen to be held on Friday evenings from seven, eight-thirty p.m. right here by our downtown park area. City would host the Blues Brothers June twenty-first, and the Four C Notes August twenty-third. They went with those choices because those are both kind of family-friendly type acts, because we had the rock bands and all that stuff, and they chose to go with these, a little more subdued, more family-oriented. Need a motion on this one?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Sorrentino?
Why wasn't the Sounds of Summer Concert Series considered with these cruise night shows? Instead of separate standalones, that twenty-one hundred dollars, and another one for twelve fifty. And now we have this summer series that would be duplicated on Addison does, and they seem to be pretty successful at it.
Go ahead, Grant.
I believe that the desire of the committee was to enhance our special events by offering multiple opportunities for fun and entertainment throughout the summer, so that's why we have separate events going on, potential for the schedule.
Good answer.
Alderman Wesley, you are next.
My question on this one. Are we having alcohol out there or not? Because I, I do music in the park quite a bit in other towns. Bensonville allows alcohol, and listening to music, Addison does, are we allowing people to be whining or not? Or anything?
Go ahead, Grant.
The desire of the committee is to allow alcohol to be brought onto the premises. We are working with the police department to work out logistics of that currently.
Follow up, go ahead.
So we aren't talking about fencing that whole area, are we, in this situation or not?
Chief, you want to talk on that?
So, we did meet with Grant, myself and Director York. We're discussing the layout of the area and how big of an area it'll be. We've already discussing staffing, PD side and public works side. I don't think we've made a final determination on what needs to be fenced, but having adequate people in place to make sure that, you know, open containers aren't leaving the area, so. That's still, we've had our first preliminary meeting, we still have to work some of the details out on that, but we have, well, we are working on that.
Go ahead, you have follow up?
Yeah, Mayor, I really think, we really need to look at it strongly, because if we fenced in the area, the people aren't going to come. As you've seen in Bensonville, I don't know if anyone went to Bensonville Music in the Park, Addison, they haven't had a problem out there at all. I don't feel like caging or fencing in that area that they have to only have alcohol in the area. I totally understand that. You know, that is a drawback, that's why people go out, listen to music in the park, okay? And I do a lot of them, no doubt about it. So, I mean, if you are really considering fencing in any part of the area where the bands are playing, I can't support this.
Go ahead, Chief.
No, I would say those considerations are real important. We haven't talked to Bensonville or Addison, but certainly your perspective on that is going to play into it. Like I said, we just had one meeting to talk about, hey, this is how many people we think we're going to staff out there, and, you know, I imagine the first one would be a lower attendance than any future ones, until it builds up some following. So, we'll take that into account, and like I said, we haven't determined that there should be, we just had an initial meeting to discuss that we will need additional staffing out there.
I agree with that.
Go ahead, follow up.
I agree with that, they, they have tons of staffing out there, I, I agree one hundred percent, but to even consider fencing it in, I think we would lose the, what we want to build up there, that's all I have.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you had your hand up? Go ahead.
Grant, you said that, well, don't sit down yet, Greg, because I have questions to you too. You said that they'd be able to bring alcohol in. Are we not, are we going to have vendors there too, or no?
Not selling. Go ahead, Grant.
I think we would probably invite White Cottage to partner with us to sell pizza, and, and if people wanted to go and, you know, enjoy their alcohol on White Cottage's premises where they sell it, that would certainly be up to them, but the, the desire of the committee is to make this a BYOB event.
All right.
Go ahead.
Because at these other events, they sell the alcohol there, they don't bring it in. Bensonville sells their alcohol on the premises. So, I don't.
That's not correct.
That's not correct.
Hold on. I thought they used, they were allowed to bring coolers in Bensonville from, unless they've changed that in the past year, I don't know. That I don't know.
No.
Hold on, hold on, one at a time, guys. Go ahead. Alderman Wesley, I know you go to those quite a few.
Bensonville do not sell alcohol, but Addison does sell alcohol.
Okay.
Bensonville will, Addison does.
Okay, Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead, sorry.
So, how do you monitor, well, forget it, this is a police matter, so for minors and stuff, you can deal with it.
Right, we leave that stuff to the experts. Any other questions? Alderman Messina, go ahead.
And just to make clear, because I, I know where the conversation's trying to lead to, this event would be monitored by the PD, as would any event that the city would host, whether it would be an open house, whether it would be Prairie Fest, same scenario, meaning there's going to be a police presence, just like we talked about, and maybe we get clarity, in Addison and in Bensonville, from what I was told, they're allowed to bring, they're, they're allowed to bring their own alcohol, right? The question was that, not can you sell alcohol, and I think up here, we were debating, can you bring some? So I just want clarity for those watching at home, so things don't get confused or twisted. Could you please clarify what we just talked about?
And those that can bring alcohol have to be of age, of course.
Correct. Could you please, Chief, clarify that?
Go ahead, Chief, you could.
Yeah, I know that's what the committee was looking for. I'm familiar with another town that's a little bit west of here, that like on their Fourth of July, they do sell alcohol, but then they allow people to bring whatever they want to. So, we just have to make sure that we adequately staff it, to make sure there's no problems, and kind of like with Prairie Fest, even though the, you know, all the alcohol is sold up there, occasionally someone does get out of hand, and we would deal with that as we would in those situations, and ask them to leave the park. You know, I think we can handle it.
Thank you.
Alderman Sizmarski, go ahead.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but you will have people walking through occasionally through the crowds, like Bensonville does, watching, and you have every right to ask for their ID, correct?
Chief.
Definitely, and we already talked about this at a PD staff meeting last week, to just kind of put the seeds out there that we're considering it. We would have a full incident plan ready for, for that event, and then just make sure we have enough people out there to staff it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Upstein.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes, and that passes. Thank you. That concludes my report. Mr. Mermis, city manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, I have tacos and streetlights. Is there a preference to which one first?
Let's start with the tacos.
Tacos, okay. Taco Tuesday will be featured as one of Chicago's Best. The city of Wooddale is pleased to announce that its own Taco Tuesday, located at one five-nine Front Street, one fifty-nine Front Street, will be featured on an upcoming episode of Chicago's Best and WGN. The episode will be filmed January twenty-second at eleven-thirty a.m., and Taco Tuesday is inviting all members of the Wooddale community to stop in for lunch that day and show their support during the filming. The episode will be featuring Taco Tuesday's pork and steak tacos as some of Chicago's Best Lunch Deals, once again, for those of you at home, next week, January twenty-second at eleven-thirty a.m., Taco Tuesday, one fifty-nine Front Street.
No, you can't get in, you go.
Can I make a comment? No. Go ahead.
Now, streetlights, this is the latest from comment this week in reference to the Oakwood Streetlights. The Oakwood Streetlights were slightly delayed. All non-essential projects were delayed after the November blizzard that hit the Chicagoland area, but they are on schedule now for starting the week of February eleventh, and be completed the week of February twenty-fifth. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Next, consent agenda, we have none. Committee Chairman reports planning and zoning, Alderman Woods.
No report, Mayor.
Public health and safety, Alderman Sorrentino.
No report, Mayor.
Public Works, Alderman Sizmarski.
Mayor, I have two.
Go ahead.
The approval of final project cost letter to the contract of forty-six forty-two of the Illinois three ninety project between Lively Boulevard and Route eighty-three in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and nine cents. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions, Dennis? Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
How much more do we have on this project?
Mr. York.
Is this the end of it?
Go ahead.
Probably not.
Is it ever the end of anything? No, there's this project, the one that's coming up next, and then there's a final landscaping project that will be hopefully done in this coming spring, so there'll be one more big contract out there.
Could we get?
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Could I get dollar amount of how much more is left on it?
Mr. Mermis?
Sir, yeah, I'll throw the infamous thermometer that Mr. Markort produces in the manager's report, either tomorrow or next Friday. For those residents at home, how this works is, the city actually has some right-of-way that we owned as part of the Algen-O'Hare three ninety tollway project, and the tollway bought our right-of-way for around one million dollars, so this is not out-of-pocket expenses, these are essentially credits from the tollway for that land, and I know there was some hard lobbying by the city and our neighbors around us to actually recoup any funds that we didn't actually recoup any funds that we didn't spend for that right-of-way and we'll be putting that back in our coffers, assuming that we will have extra. And right now, it's looking like we will have extra to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars. But I'll sort that out with Scott and get an updated thermometer for you all either tomorrow or next week.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Follow up? Alderman Messina?
Just to make, make clear, so the tollway essentially was a credit, which we knew to get, but now we're potentially getting that money back in the form of revenue pack, tax, or dollars back.
Right. We don't have the final number, it's around 200,000 or so, depending what the final payouts are going to be. So all the work that was done on the tollway over there was paid for by, you know, the money they owed us.
Yes.
Very simple. Any other questions? Alderman Catalano, go ahead.
So on the packet, page 33, I have 340,000, that's not correct, of credits.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, as of right now, there's approximately 340,000 dollars with the credits. Now, there's still the other contract that is looming, we don't know what that final cost is going to be. So, at the best-case scenario, it's probably 340. At the worst-case scenario, it's probably in the 2 someplace. So, there's going to be, we're going to get a large sum of money back from the, from the sale of those right-of-way areas.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman Smarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Second, I've got approval of final project cost letter for contract 4642 of the Illinois 390 project between Arlington Heights Road and Lively Boulevard in the amount of $139,880.42. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Alderman Catalano, a second. Any questions on this one? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman Smarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Messina?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under Other Business, Airport Noise, Alderman Jacob?
Have one report, kind of a little long, but the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, released the draft reevaluation document of the O'Hare Modernization Environmental Impact Statement for the proposed interim fly quiet. The document is available online to the public through the following link. You'll find that at www.faa.gov. It will be available on our website tomorrow. The FAA is currently conducting a written reevaluation of the O'Hare Modernization Environmental Impact Statement for the proposed interim fly quiet runway rotation plan. Since September 2015, the Fly Quiet Committee of the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission, ONCC, has worked with the Chicago. FAA representatives will be available to provide information about the draft evaluation document during public workshops scheduled on the following dates. Monday, February 4th, Belvedere Events and Banquets at 1170 West Devon Avenue in Up Grove Village. Tuesday, February 5th, at White Eagle Banquets, 6839 North Milwaukee Avenue in Niles. Wednesday, February 6th, Hanging Gardens Banquet Rooms, 8301 West Belmont Avenue, River Grove. Thursday, February 7th, the Diplomat West, 681 West North Avenue in Elmhurst. The two closest ones to us are on February 4th in Elk Grove at the Belvedere Events and February 7th, the Diplomat West. Each workshop, public workshop, starts at 2:00 p.m. and concludes by 8:00 p.m. ONCC members are encouraged to attend and participate during the workshops. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Go ahead, Alderman Woods? On the airport?
Yeah, just wanted to bring up a couple things at the latest ONCC technical committee. They were going over, I'm sure everybody's aware of the new 311 system for reporting the air noise complaints. And the only thing that that has really affected was I've gotten more complaints that the system doesn't work. It's come, it's come to the committee's attention that in some way, shape or form, the system wasn't really counting suburban votes or taking their phone calls, they were getting rejected. So right now, they're in the process of fixing that, they promised it'll get fixed quickly. I'm not sure what quickly means to the ONCC.
When was that last meeting?
That was this past Tuesday.
This week?
Yes, this week.
Still not working.
Right. So they're still working on that, they said it even has glitches for Chicago. And when it does work, anybody that's used it quickly realizes how time-consuming and cumbersome it is that you have to go through it, it almost takes about two minutes to make a report and in some cases, four or five airplanes have flown over your head while you're trying to make one call. It's even more than that if you try to wake up from a dead sleep at 2:00 in the morning. But some good information that I did find in talking to a gentleman that comes to all the ONCC meetings, he lives in Medina, is that there is an app out there, third-party app, which I did download and I became a paid member, that you can make the reports the same as the old fare app where it's one key to enter all your information, but the better thing about this is that not only do you report the noise, it actually goes out and figures out what plane was making that noise based on your GPS location and the nearest plane to you. So, I'll get the information to the city, but it'll report what flight it was, what airport, if it was a commercial flight, a cargo flight, the flight call sign, the registration number of the plane, whether it was arrival or departure, the distance it was from you and the altitude of the plane when it flew over the location. So the nice thing is that we have so much more information, constructive information, to be able to do a little better, little better job of debating some of the issues with O'Hare. So, this is, is a free app, you only get 30, I think it's 30 reports for free in a month. So that would only be one a day. You'll quickly use that up if you're in a flight pattern. To get a paid app, which is unlimited, it costs $5 a month. So, I was going to get and see maybe if there's something we can help with to offset that or whatever, but just for the people out there, if they want to at least get the free app, they can start reporting some of the...
It was Mr. Dwyer, right?
Yes, Mr. Dwyer, correct. That was it.
Do you have something on that, Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, can we, can't we download that app on the city website?
No. They might have print, probably not.
Okay.
They probably have rights, I'm sure. All right, next, stormwater? Alderman Wesley?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Approval of list of bills?
Two reports, Mayor.
Alderman Messina?
Two reports, Mayor.
Go ahead.
First report, list of bills dated January 17, 2019, in the amount of $583,195.24. That is my report.
Second.
That's your motion, excuse me.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions on those first set of bills?
Question?
Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Could someone tell me what local govern, GovNews is?
Mr. Wilson.
There's one, two, three, four, five one-year memberships.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson. Do you have a page number on that? Alderman? Go ahead, I said, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that is obviously a subscription. It's a listserv, it's an email that we get six days a week, we don't get it on Sunday. It has anywhere from probably, I don't know, probably 60 to 100 email article links to articles that pertain to local government, ranging from schools to building redevelopment, you know, public policy, state and national issues, things of that nature. And then there's also like a informal question and answer legal thing at the bottom. So we've been members of that for probably three or four years now. And the reason it's broken up by that is each department that has a membership, it's parsed out to each department. So that's why you see like the seven one-year memberships or whatever, it's broken out per, per person in each department.
Follow up, go ahead.
So, we can't just have one membership for the whole city?
Mr. Wilson.
And share the link? Or is it a link or what?
So the membership is the same cost whether we have one person or I believe we have the maximum number of eligible emails linked to it currently. So even if we were to go down to one email, it'd still be the same cost. The first year that we tried it out, they did give us a little bit of a discount in that regard because we were trying it out and that's what we did, actually, we forwarded it out. But then, after the second year, when it was the same price, it, you know, didn't really seem that efficient to forward it every day when we could just email it directly for the exact same cost.
Follow up? Alderman Wesley?
No, I got another question on.
Go ahead, different, different question?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Page 52.
Can I comment on it real quick?
Oh, on the same?
So he can sit.
Okay, go ahead. Alderman Messina, sorry, on the same subject.
Yeah, regarding that subject, so that's software. And if he, we, the city were to get audited, and so what you're saying you want to do is one license for seven people, is you're cheating that company. So you're stealing essentially is what you're recommending. So that's not good. If we get audited, city will get fined. Working for IBM, I can tell you that we audit companies all the time that do that, so we need to be smart about that. If there's seven people using it, you need to buy seven licenses. So, just wanted to make that comment because I don't want the city to get audited.
Hold on, I think what Mr. Wilson said is, we pay one fee and we can have seven computers on there, right? Is that what you said, Mr. Wilson?
There are different kind of license types.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson, is, that's what I understood.
Yeah, my understanding is that it's the same fee whether we have one person on it or seven people on it.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
So typically with subscription-based stuff and Nixon IT as well, you can have something called concurrent where there's seven licenses and there's 50 of us, but once seven of us, seven of the 50 go in, it's locked.
Right.
And there's another one that says, there's only seven, only you seven, and if there's more, then that's it. That's all we're giving you is seven, one for you, one for you, one for you. So I would ask you to go back and make sure because I, what was being recommended, that was my only, my only recommendation, what was being recommended with the one license most likely probably will not work and will put the city out of compliance and potentially audited. So, before you make any moves, if you would, please look into that, our subscription type.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I do know that if we go over the number of emails that we have now, that would put us in a higher price tier.
What, what I would ask, sorry, what I would ask is very simply, if you were to take that email and you went down to one license and you were to forward it to everybody else in this city and you took their proprietary information, you forwarded it on, would the city be in compliance or out of compliance? And I guarantee you I will know the answer. But I would like you to come back to the council and give us that answer because that's what's being recommended by Alderman Roy Wesley.
No, I don't think.
Well, he was saying go down to one license, I'm telling...
Well, because he didn't understand.
I don't know how it works.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I just want to make sure the city's protected. So if you can, can you please come back to the council next time, just to make sure we're protected?
Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I, I know the same thing.
Yeah.
Alderman Wesley?
Is there a misprint here that, I just see that one is for four heart and the other ones are all two heart? Was that a typo or something?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
I just need to find her quick. One department, I just don't remember which one, if you give me a second. So that's for CD, they have two licenses down there. So, Mr. Cage gets one and Ms. Christie gets one. So they have two, so that's why it's, it's pro-rata.
Go ahead.
They can't.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley. We're still paying the same price is what Mr. Wilson is saying, so, and they probably use it the most. Go ahead, Mr. Wesley. You had another question?
Forget it, it's not worth it. It just doesn't seem like the department needs two, but this, here and there.
You had another question, though, right?
Yeah, something else, are we done with this one?
Yeah, 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 I think everybody's done.
So, page 52, Schaumburg Bank and Trust.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Go ahead.
Sure. So, as it says on there, that's the unused commitment fee, that is for the line of credit for the Thorndale TIF that the city acquired shortly after the TIF was established, so, so that's good news. Bad news is we haven't used any of that line of credit, so we're not paying on any interest on it because we haven't tapped it yet. But there was a nominal fee, nominal quarterly fee for the, for the line to be open, and so that's what, that's what that's paying.
Go ahead.
So we are paying $1,277.77 per quarter for this line of credit and for how much of the line of credit?
Mr. Wilson?
So your first part, correct, that much per quarter. And I believe the line of credit was for $5 million and I believe there's another year, year and a half or so on that, and then it would just lapse or, you know, presupposing that there was nothing open on it, then it would cease unless the city wanted to extend it at that point.
Follow up? Nope. Okay, any other questions, Alderman? Eugene Wesley, did you have your hand up?
I have only one question, page 45, the lights for the city hall, is that the down payment? The lights?
Which, Mr. York?
The ballards lights for the city hall? Is that...
Page 45, you said?
Yes, I'm sorry.
From gray bar?